And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a proclamation I'd like to read tonight. Starts out, whereas from early morning to late in the evening, from highways to county gravel roads, from sub-zero morning temps to warm spring afternoons, Winona school bus drivers safely transport more than 2,700 students daily to and from school each day. And whereas school bus drivers are important figures in a student's school day, beginning with a positive influence from the moment the student boards the bus and every evening before they return home. And whereas our school bus drivers travel almost 1 million miles each school year to transport our students within our district to and from school. And whereas students are nearly eight times safer riding to and from school in a school bus than in cars, thanks to rigorous safety standards for vehicles, drivers, as well as student training efforts. And whereas we salute and appreciate school bus drivers every day and recognize the invaluable contributions they make the education process. Now therefore, I, Mark Peterson, Mayor of Winona, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, February 26th, 2020, a School Bus Driver Appreciation Day in the City of Winona. And is somebody here that would like to receive this? If not, I'll just file it. Keep your hands inside the windows. And I just wanted to say thank you to the folks that organized and did the Frozen River Film Festival and what a good job they did and all their hard work. Also, if you get a chance sometime in the future, if you didn't see it, the film Raising Hell, the film about restoring the Masonic Drops by Mary Farrell was very well done and very enjoyable. And that's all I have tonight. City Manager?
I'd like to invite the Fire Chief to come forward. And been a lot of energy around the river and where we're at with high water in this spring and/or fall, late winter, whatever. And so maybe Kurt, if you could just talk a little bit about some of the preparations that we're making, the discussions we're having, just to assure folks that we're staying on top of this as best we can.
Sure.
And then secondly, you issued the annual report, so if council has any questions of the report, I'm sure Chief would love to answer them.
Absolutely. Mayor, Council, to this date, we've had one meeting with the Corps and we've had a national webinar basically reporting the regional water forecast for the country. We do have a scheduled meeting with the Corps next week. But in the big realm and picture of things, I believe the middle of March, early April, meetings that we'll have probably will be more specific with water levels and so forth. So to this point, I'll start with the positive side. Ice jams. We were dealing with ice jams the first week in January. Our levee was underwater. We looked at about a three and a half foot rise in water just due to the ice jams that we were dealing with. From Lockin Dam 5A, which is Winona Dam, down to Lockin Dam 9, we were having problems with a warm winter per se, where we had some freezes that the river froze up and then melted. We had some ice issues, but we were also dealing with a river that was high basically since October. And the Corps more or less lost the ability to regulate the rollers and the gates due to the ice, high water. Hence, we had the ice jam issue. Like I said, the bright side, the ice jam issue is more or less remedied itself. And if anybody gets down to the river, the water dropped about three and a half feet. So we're sitting good right now water level-wise. The other positive that we could take out of this is the snow levels that we've had that basically feed into the Mississippi River watershed. Up until last night, we were looking really good on the Minnesota River, but I think they got quite a bit of snow last night, so we'll have to see how that pans out. So it's kind of below average. In certain areas, it's above. Not to elaborate, the state of Minnesota, the Red River is going to really probably get hit hard this year with just the snow amounts. And they're probably going to look at some issues up around Duluth in that area. But snow level is kind of a bright side for us, so hopefully that works out. But like I said, the key's going to be how we do over the next month as far as temperatures, as far as the snow melt. If we warm up really quick, the big detriment is our soil water content. It's about equivalent to what it was last year. So, you know, we just don't have the capacity to take a lot of rain and a quick runoff and a quick melt with snow. So big-picture wise, it's going to be middle of March, first week in April, that's really going to dictate how we fare flood-wise. So any question? Yeah?
Yeah, I appreciate the report. It's very detailed and, you know, I've gone through it. Two questions about that. I noticed that from 2018, 2019, the fire-related calls are up.
Yeah, we're up about 100. This is in regards to the annual report?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're up right around 100 calls.
Any, because we've had inspections going forward?
Big-picture wise, it was, our actual fires weren't, it was more false alarms, fire alarms, institutional alarms that get counted as a fire alarm. The overall fire numbers were relatively in the same ballpark that we've had over the number of the last several years. A real big thing, I think, if you guys actually got into the report, we did almost 708 fire inspections last year, which is almost double what we've normally done over the last 30 years. So we really put a big emphasis in the prevention side of it. But yeah, I was kind of surprised at the numbers. It was about 100 more calls.
I also noticed in the report too that firefighter injuries were up from the year before that.
Yep. The work comp end of it was actually down, but I think we've become much better in reporting strains and sprains. But we've kind of gone out of our way with an outside company to come in and actually do a-specific physical training for our firefighters that is specific job-related stuff. And last year was the first year, so I'm hoping to look at it over the next two years utilizing this company and see where we're sitting with exactly what you're talking about.
We want to make sure on the council's side, I think, that, you know, we want to make sure everything is as it should be and there's no anomal- anomaly, strange things happening.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
We really stress that they report injuries, which they haven't done so much in the past. One thing is that it's helpful for them to learn either near misses or an injury when it isn't quite as, maybe as bad as they reported in the past, because we can then get them to think about, like, there's different lifting techniques and things that we're doing right now. But they also remind each other about being more careful on the job.
The fire department's changed quite a bit since I got hired. And it's fun to watch, but it's a different animal. And I'm kind of proud of the guys. They're all young guys and they do an exceptional job watching each other's backs and making sure they report those issues, so.
Literally on the backs.
Literally.
Yeah, just another question, Chief, just related to the floodwater now. If something does hit, we are ready to go to begin to defend it.
We, and I think we had a few council people attended the county meeting we had in regards to, I'm trying to think back when that was. But what we did as a city, we updated our actual evacuation plan. So that's an updated plan that was revised back in 2019, probably June. You know, we're very fortunate to have a certified, I believe it's certified levee. Very unfortunate.
Is anyone sure?
I haven't talked to Keith, so I should talk to Keith. But, you know, the essential part to that levee is making sure that our pumps and everything else are up to snuff and working. And with conversations with the city manager, you know, having a plan for if something doesn't work, what do we need to do to step in and, you know, get a portable pump or, you know, stuff like that? So we're extremely fortunate, you know. You look what's happening down in Mississippi right now and we're very, very fortunate. But we, I think infrastructure-wise, we just need to make sure we're keeping up with what we need generator-wise, electrical-wise to maintain that system that we have, so.
And I note in your report, very, very good report, but you need to update your picture to a more current photo of yourself, not your high school picture.
Nope, I had more hair when I took that picture, so I'm going to leave it in there.
Now she's looking. Check this out again.
His high school picture's in there.
My junior high picture.
Thank you, Chief.
Other questions? Well, thank you, Chief, for giving us that update.
I have one other thing, Your Honor. The other issue that seems to be getting the community's attention is the proposal for sand storage on Latch Island and elsewhere. Keith and I are going to invite someone from the Corps to come and talk to the council, pre-council at the next meeting, so we can have a conversation with them before the public comment period is over. We want to hear what the public has had to say by then, but also better understand the plans that they're looking at and open a dialogue with them from the council's standpoint. Thank you.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurli.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan.
Here.
Porzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the 276 East Garvin Heights rezoning from agriculture to rural residential.
All right, public hearing. Clear the public hearing open. And Carlos, you want to leave this out?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item is a request by Jerry Papenfuss to rezone seven acres of 276 East Garvin Heights Road from agricultural natural resources to rural residential zoning to facilitate development of seven single-family homes just off of East Garvin Heights Road. The subject property is noted on the screen, essentially in the middle of the screen with the dotted line. To the north or above the subject property is city-owned property as well as the Bluff Face and the Mississippi River Valley. To the northwest is the Reddick property that sits out on kind of a point. You can see it from the valley. To the west is a Bluffland area that's also zoned agricultural natural resources. To the south is the Highland subdivision that was rezoned from agricultural natural resources to residential suburban in and around 2002, 2003 for that development. To the east is a single-family home, the Birdsall property, that is zoned agricultural natural resources currently. So as I mentioned, the request is to rezone the subject property from agricultural natural resources to rural residential for the construction of seven single-family homes. The seven single-family homes are proposed on the southern portion of the subject property on approximately three acres. The houses would essentially mirror the houses that are currently to the south or below the subject property on the slide of Bluff. To the north of the seven single-family homes is a four-acre portion of land that would be dedicated to the city as part of a future plat, preliminary plat and final plat process. That would be dedicated to the city at no cost. So overall, what Mr. Papenfuss is petitioning for is rezoning of all the land with the intent to only use portion of it for development of seven single-family homes with the remainder to be dedicated to the city. On January 27th, the Planning Commission reviewed the request and voted unanimously to approve it with the following findings. There was no error or oversight, they found, made in the 1959, 1960 zoning of the site. Properties to the south were rezoned from agricultural to residential suburban in 2003 for the Highland subdivision. This would support the requested RR rural residential zoning. The proposed zoning matches the residential character of the area and thus will not impose undue hardship on adjacent properties. Fourth, given the proposed zoning district matches the low-density residential character of the area, this is an appropriate location for RR zoning. And finally, spot zoning is not evident. Council options tonight, you could approve the request as submitted. Under this option, a motion to introduce the ordinance that's included in your packets for adoption should be made. You could also deny the request citing specific reasons for denial, modify the request, or table the item if there's additional questions. Thank you.
Questions for Carlos?
Mayor?
George?
There's already utilities out there.
Yes, there are utilities.
Al? Number of questions, Carlos, if you don't mind. Thank you for the presentation. Is this the area that prior to Mr. Papenfuss acquiring it was used as the transmitter site and building for KW10 radio?
Yes, it was. The tower has been taken down.
Right. Does, is that building still on that site or is it going to be removed?
There is a building still on the site, but it will be removed.
And I understand too, simply because of my history with KW10 many years ago, that there was a deep well in, on that property to serve those, that particular building. Is that going to be sealed and capped as part of the process going forward?
I assume it would be. We'll take a look at that as part of the preliminary plat and final plat.
Advise you of that to make sure that, you know, it doesn't have an egress or, you know, other stuff that shouldn't be in our groundwater, so.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Other comment? Eileen?
I know with a lot of the other conversations we've had about development up in the Bluffs has been about increasing impervious surfaces as far as, you know, well, there's a street up there already, obviously, but driveways, houses, all that kind of thing. So as, if this moves forward and then as we move forward and or Mr. Papenfuss moves forward in the development project, that's something that we would, that would have to be taken into consideration, is that correct?
Definitely. It's something that would come into consideration, especially being close to the top of Bluff on the west side of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
What are the plans for the four acres going into the city?
We don't have specific plans right now. We are in communication with Mr. Papenfuss related to trail connections. The Bluff's traverse trail going from Sugarloaf to St. Mary's passes through this area. Something that we'll take a look at through the planning process.
Paul?
That was my question.
All right. Well, thank you, Carlos. Anybody else here wish to speak to this issue? Step forward, state your name, address.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm Jerry Papenfuss. I live at 276 Pleasant Hill Drive and I'm the developer of the property. Carlos has outlined it very well and I agree with everything he said. I just want to point out a couple of things. Our goal is to sell these lots at a price that will allow a $300,000 home. In the last two years in Winona County, about 80 homes each year were sold. Now, most of these, of course, were homes that had been already built. But these were sold in the $250,000 to $350,000 range, 80 homes a year. So that shows me that there's a market for that price of a home. And these lots should be sold to new families moving into Winona or families that are moving up from a starter home to a larger home. And then the starter homes would be available for first-time buyers. When finished with these seven homes, that will add about $2 million to the tax base. And the assessments on those seven lots will add about $100,000 to the city treasury. And that's pure profit because you're already paying for the sewer and water that you installed quite a few years ago. These seven homes will also be buying water and sewer service. And just want to point out that this is a significant impact on the City of Winona. And I'll answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Papenfuss?
Al? Thank you for the presentation. I understand that a few years ago, the city purchased some land in that area to modify the development in that area at the edge of the Bluff. You're proposing to work with the city to donate some of that land toward the Bluff to the city. How much of that is land that the city, you know, worked with you on that agreement?
Well, what we're proposing has nothing to do with the land that the city purchased earlier.
Oh, okay. That's what I'm asking for.
This would be an addition then.
Oh, so an additional part of the land back from the edge of the Bluff.
Yes, land that's over now starts at the edge of the Bluff.
Okay.
And then this would connect to it and then we'd have the homes that would front on East Garvin Heights Road.
Well, good. I appreciate that. I appreciate the generosity too. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? One last chance. Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none. I'll declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance and accept the two attachments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any further discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Closed. Carrie's.
Item 2.2 is the 262 High Forest rezoning from R2 to MUN.
All right, it's a public hearing. I'll clear the public hearing open and we'll put Carlos up there again.
All right, evening, Council. This is a second rezoning on your agenda tonight. This request has come from QuickTrip and they are requesting rezoning of 262 High Forest Street from R2 Medium Density Residential to MUN, which is Mixed Use Neighborhood Zoning. Mixed Use Neighborhood Zoning is a new zoning district that was added to our code in 2017. It is meant as a transition district between residential areas and neighborhood commercial nodes. So what they are requesting to do is to transition this property from its current residential zoning to that mixed-use neighborhood classification. The property historically has had a residential dwelling on it. That residential dwelling has been demolished. QuickTrip currently owns the subject property. And the proposal for this is to add in a parking area that would help to serve the existing facility at the corner of Mankato and Broadway. To the north of the subject property is residential, a residential home. And also to the east is a residential home. To the west is High Forest Street. To the south and southeast is the QuickTrip use that has been in operation since approximately 1985. Since 1985, the use has expanded on the south half of this block, gradually moving to the west. First with an addition of two lots in and around 1995, then with subsequent rezoning in 2010 when the car wash was added. So the convenience store has expanded and this would be the proposal for QuickTrip to rezone this property as well to help with the parking requirements and demands resulting from the existing convenience store. On January 27th, the Planning Commission did review this request and recommended approval unanimously. They found no error or oversight was made in the original zoning of the site. They also found that although residential land uses to the north and east of the site have remained stable since 1960, the houses are still there. The commercial use to the south has expanded and been the subject of multiple commercial rezonings, as I previously mentioned. Rezoning the subject parcel is not likely to have any greater impact on adjacent properties than what currently exists in nearby areas where residential areas are adjacent to this mixed-use neighborhood zoning. Fourth, given the subject property is a small piece of land adjacent to an existing mixed-use neighborhood district and on a block which has seen a number of zoning changes, the subject property is an appropriate location for the rezoning. And finally, they found that spot zoning is not evident. Council options are the same as the previous item. You could approve the request as submitted. Under this option, a motion to introduce ordinance in your packets would be in order. You could deny the request, modify the request, or table the item if there's more information needed. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Carlos? George?
Carlos, that alley now that goes between QuickTrip and there now, is that alley owned by QuickTrip or is it owned by one of the residential neighbors? Or didn't three of them own that alley at one time?
The QuickTrip representative might have a better answer to that. And he is here tonight to speak to that as well. But essentially, that alley access will still be maintained.
Paul?
Is, I'm wondering maybe, and maybe they're here, if the residential property to the north in the corner is here and has any comments about it. My concern would be for the residential properties nearby, the additional light that will be shining onto the lot and then dispersing into the neighborhood. And, you know, those lights tend to be on all night long and make it difficult for people to sleep. And so I'm just wondering what the lighting situation might be with all of those seven spots in that area and how that might impact the residents.
Sure. And I would defer again to the QuickTrip representative.
All right, well, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Anybody else here wish to speak? This would be the time. State your name and address, please.
Nick Newman. I'm by 3613 Place North on Alaska, Wisconsin, here representing QuickTrip. Mayor and Council, feel free to ask some questions.
Okay, well, these questions, maybe that were just asked, you could address about the alley and the lighting.
So the alley is not owned by QuickTrip. I believe we do maintain it. However, with our snow plowing, to the best of my knowledge, we, our enters would come off the alley and not by the city per Carlos's request. But as far as the lights go, there was no intention to put lights in there, but one of the neighbors did and we reached out by letter requesting a fence. So it's a standard pretty much now for us, a six-foot vinyl privacy fence, no slats. And unless we deemed it, unless it was unsafe, we wouldn't put lights, like regular parking lot lights. We could put something on like a bollard post that would be underneath fence height. You know, if there was some kind of safety issue. Essentially, this is going to be for our employees to park, to open up because there's quite a bit of congestion in and around the store with walking, foot traffic and vehicles. So we're trying to make it safer for everyone. If we can get our employees to not park on the road or in front of the regular parking, then we can open that up for our guests and other citizens.
And George, you have some questions?
Well, just about as far as the alley goes, I know she's passed away now. I know she was part owner of that alley along with the former Jack's place. So like I say, I know, but the alley's going to be kept open for access and I know you do maintain that alley, so. And I think too, with some lighting down below, I believe it'll make that whole neighborhood a lot safer as well too, so.
Michelle?
Mine isn't really a question. I just want to compliment QuickTrip on being a good neighbor. I watched them do the development on Broadway and the neighbors ended up with a beautiful fence with trees. And I mean, it's manicured and well-maintained and no complaints from them because you're a good neighbor that way. You make the place beautiful. So when you're next door, there aren't lights shining in their house. There's a privacy fence and then there's greenery. And I think what you did here years ago when you first updated it shows that I think if you're a neighbor to this property, you're a neighbor to this property, probably this parking is only going to enhance your property, not detract from it. Obviously, getting people off the street is never bad for your employees, safer for them too. So I'm pleased that you continue to make improvements in our community.
Well, thank you. We try very hard to do that everywhere.
I love QuickTrip. I just think it's a great company, so I'm just, I love you guys.
Any other questions?
I love QuickTrip too, but I noticed that you don't build smaller stores. You seem to build bigger ones. So I'm just curious, is there a long-range plan for this store to get bigger? Is that part of the concept here, is as property owners are willing, you might buy them up and expand the store?
As long as, well, Don always says, we're only as good as our worst store, so.
And this probably isn't your worst store.
Now, bigger is not always better.
Right.
But in certain situations where, you know, as it goes on, we're constantly remodeling, rebuilding, restructuring, is there a possibility? Yeah, absolutely.
But it's not to your knowledge?
Not to my knowledge, anytime in the small, you know, we work kind of in five-year outlook plans. It's really hard to look farther than that, because you don't know how economics goes. And, you know, we're also building out, but Don, you know, is in there every day, and if he wants to focus on our worst 200 stores, well, you know, if a store built in, would you say 85 or 95, you know, that's going to fall into that, hey, we need to probably do some remodeling or upkeep at least. And so, yeah, if situations were to, you know, make the rest of that block accessible, we do it a lot. So I'm not going to say no, but I don't know when either.
Okay.
I don't have a specific date for doing this.
Just keep in mind, there is one important historic building on that block.
Yes, you know, and I.
Stay away from.
[laughing].
You said it clearer than I did. Other questions, George?
I mean, like, the amount of business down there, I believe, I know that store was rebuilt twice, if not three times already, so I know they do do good revenue down there, so.
And with the car wash addition too, you know, we're kind of setting a footprint, so to speak, you know. Where we wouldn't go, we'd build a car wash and then completely demo the whole thing. We may add birch chicken or, you know, one of those new type meal programs that will be running out throughout the years, you know, where you might be able to reconfigure gas and make the store a little bigger, kitchens bigger, or something like that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Anybody else wants to speak? Step to the podium. State your name and address.
My name is Connor Moore, temporarily located at 700 Paris Heights at St. Mary's University. And just documenting, can I get a clarification on what the zoning code was for the property that it is currently? Is it R1?
It's currently R2 Medium Density Residential zoning, and the proposal is to change it to Mixed Use Neighborhood, MUN zoning. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? One more chance. Hearing none. Declare the public hearing closed and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request as submitted and introduce the attached ordinance along with the two attachments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is the sign-in banner schedule, and I distributed an updated version this evening. I had one error on there, so the updated schedule.
Move to approved sign-in banner schedule?
I can second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Item 3.2 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for Habitat for Humanity for Saturday, April 18th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 3.3 is the temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Great River Shakespeare Festival for Saturday, March 21st.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
And item 3.4 is the temporary wine and malt liquor license for hurryback productions for March 27th and May night. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 3.5 is a request to hold the Miles for Smiles Walk at the West Lake on Saturday, May 30th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul. Okay, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 3.6, request to block portion of alley behind Port 507 on Saturday, May, March 7th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Pam?
There's no reason listed here, and I was just curious what the reason is. They're going to hold a tournament, a beanbag tournament. Aha. Good reason.
Does this, you know, you're talking about the blocking off of the area behind the building. How much into the alley does it encroach? Is there any?
So it's from the street in 32 feet. So I think it's only behind their building.
Okay, but it doesn't block the alley?
It would.
It would. It's the west access to the alley, yes.
Oh, I believe there's, at least back in, when I was there, HBC has a drive-up.
They do.
Drop-off for customers, and I'm wondering if that access will still be available during this event.
Is that access open on Saturday?
Sure.
Well, it's open all the time.
I think they'd have to park on Johnson and get out and walk.
Well, you can usually drive through and then.
Right, but this would block the alley.
It would block the alley.
Yes.
So, I mean, it says that they've received permission. I assume they've talked to HBC.
That's our assumption.
Given, given what we have in front of us here. So I'll support it, but again, with that reservation.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 3.7 is a request for the Island City Beer Run, .05K and 5K for April 25th.
Move to approve the attached license agreement?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion?
What is that, like a walk for your beer?
Can you even get up a run?
I think it's the parking lot in that.
So walk for your beer? I don't understand. I love it though.
It's a run.
Is the run the wrong word to use for that particular one?
It says runway.
Think we're ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is award the contract for the Lake Park Lions Club Playground Project. The low bidder was GRS Enterprises with a total bid, including the alternates, of $187,910.29.
Well, I'd make a motion to accept the base bid and possibly alternatives A and B, but I'm not sure what they are. So I'm assuming since the lights flicked off that you're actually going to tell us, because I thought the electricity went out.
Let's let Chad do his presentation.
Do you want to take a second, or so?
You want to take a second on her motion, then?
Excuse me?
You want, do we want a second? The motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Remind you.
Mayor and council, the bid alternates are related to the restroom facility, which is really just some screening for the porta potty on the right-hand side of the screen. And the land, and alternate B was landscaping, so much of the greenery you see in this rendering. So I did want to bring this rendering. We don't necessarily often do this, but I wanted to show you the rendering of this project. And again, recognize that we had some generous donors within the community, and of course, the Lions Club, all of their efforts to raise the funds for this playground. This will be an immense enhancement to our playground system, and as I illustrated, or at least I hope I've illustrated and advocated before, that this is an all-inclusive playground. This will be our one and only that has the porn play surfacing. That's what the green and blue rendering is. It'll move the swing set to the south. We'll have an unbelievable view of the bluffs and the lake from that swing set. And again, more importantly, this begins the process to solidify some of those larger centralized playground units. And again, without, without underemphasizing, all-inclusive ADA accessible playground. So this was our second attempt to bid this project. The bids came in lower than what we, when we initially bid the project in the fall of last year, so that was a good decision for us to reject those bids at that time. We are still short. That's why we are requesting money from the facility fund to help cover some of the costs to really bring this to, this rendering alive. And again, I don't often, but this is a project where I can't advocate enough for this extra funding to make this project happen.
Michelle?
I just have to say, I know the community felt the loss of that park over this last year, and that, if that is what comes to be, it is unbelievably beautiful. And I can't help but notice that it has the Lions colors, which I think is a very nice touch, so. I'm very excited.
What's the timeline on this, Chad?
Mayor and council, we will begin this project as soon as the weather permits. The contractor is certainly willing to do that as well. I believe in the bid specs we had indicated April 1st. We want the project to be complete by midsummer, and we have some very tight deadlines related to some grant funding that we got, and so done by, complete, finished by midsummer. And again, a lot of this is weather dependent, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. And then finally, as Michelle alluded to, it is going to be a splash of color. The playground equipment is not exactly going to match what the existing playground unit is, and in some ways, that's okay. But more importantly, as Michelle mentioned, the Lions Club, who has, you know, obviously done the heavy lifting on this project, they are requesting that the benches and tables be a combination of purple and yellow to represent the Lions Club.
No?
Couple of questions. I assume that this will, the project will stabilize the soils in that area, since the whole lake park is kind of hinky as far as soils go, and that the process of building this for the period that it's under construction won't interfere with the municipal band concerts later in the, you know, June through August segment.
Mayor and council, we did have to, what actually in some ways delayed the project from the beginning was, we did need to take soil samples and make sure that we are correcting the soils, particularly for the porn play. It's quite a process to get that porn play surfacing down, and the last thing we want is that to waver and buckle. And so there's a lot of soil improvement work. It'll not, the project won't directly impact the municipal band, meaning we'll still have municipal band concerts, but we certainly are aware that Trinona Municipal Band Concerts, other events in Lake Park, unfortunately, the summer are going to be impacted. That certainly does not mean that we're going to cancel municipal band, but it'll be an under-construction site, and so it may not look the best until we get to this nice sunny day.
Short-term difficulty versus long-term?
Long-term gain.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, Chad.
My granddaughter's looking forward to it.
Mayor?
Mayor, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I think it would be, I too have heard from many people that are missing that and other playgrounds in town, and it would be great if we could get that picture out so people know what to, what to expect. Terrific.
All right. Lights, maybe?
I got them.
Connor, action?
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. And are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Passed.
Item 4.2 is to vacate the alley in the central school block. This is to adopt the ordinance. Make a motion to adopt the ordinance. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Under new business, the plant review for the NISBIT buyer plant is item 5.1. Make a motion to approve attached resolution, accepting the two attachments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any questions? Comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 5.2 is the Mississippi Riverfront Path Phase 1 project and funding.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Paul?
This kind of relates a little bit to the Lions Club mansion area in the levee. Well, I've had residents ask me, can we have some real bathrooms down by the levee? Some real, you know, hardcore, real surface bathrooms that aren't porta potties? Because I really think if we're going to showcase our community down by the lake and at the levee, you know, we're not really showcasing it with porta potties. So that's just a comment about the riverfront project, and I just think we ought to give some serious consideration to some real restrooms down by the levee.
The short answer is yes.
Mayor and council, the slightly longer answer is in item 5.6, the Levy Park Master Plan that you're going to review tonight. The number one priority in that review of that master plan is public bathrooms.
Thank you.
Don't forget the Portland lose. I don't know if you're familiar with Portland lose, but you might want to Google them. They're really nice, portable toilets. Anything else? All right, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 5.3 is the Minnesota River Water Storage Initiative Resolution.
Move to approve the attached endorsement letter.
I would second that.
Motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. Discussion?
Yeah, I support this. It makes sense. I think we as a city downriver, you know, from the Minnesota runoff and all that should do this. I read the information, I thought carefully, and I hope and I think I'm reading it correctly, that it'll help address some of the agriculture runoff that is so critical to not only that river, but anything downstream, including the Mississippi. So that's my comment.
Steve?
This initiative for the Minnesota River watershed has been going on for many, many years, and they've learned a lot through that process, and I think at some point, it'll transfer to the Mississippi watershed as well. So that's why we wanted to support this, because we think we'll need their support as well for projects that will affect us directly.
Phosphorus was one of the issues that, you know, in that watershed is an issue right now.
And they're contributing into the dead zone area into the Gulf of Mexico. We don't know if it'll impact that or not, but we think anything we can do to help the Minnesota watershed district, they will in turn help us in our own watershed.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Carrie's.
Item 5.4 is the resolution of support for the Twin Cities Milwaukee-Chicago Second Train.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Any comments or questions?
I have a question for you, Paul, if I can. How do they see funding it? And I'd asked you before when we had first looked at this, I don't know, seven or eight years ago, Amtrak and the other rail lines had told us there'd be five things we'd have to do as a city to get the stop. Did you, did you hear any on whether or not those requirements are still in place, or what the state might require of us to fund the project?
No, I have not heard of any. No, and I have not heard of any, any requirements in order to fund, fund the project. It is, I have been told that Amtrak is expected to participate as one of the matching partners for the thirty million dollars in expected project cost here in Minnesota. And of course, that includes the platform. So, and the nice thing about this is the side rail, the side rail expansions will, will, will do a significant job in helping the flow of freight traffic. So it's, it's a win-win for everybody. And we stand to gain quite a bit, doubling our passengers and, and some visitors spending money, too.
Al? Yeah, I fully support this. I, I think it's, as Councilperson Scholmeyer said, it's a win-win for everybody. And especially when, you know, I read the other day that Amtrak is cutting back on some of the services they provide on their passengers' trains, like dining cars and things that, you know, this might help increase rail traffic, which might again benefit everyone. Thank you.
Just to be clear, and I'll, the second train probably will not have a dining car.
Again, but again, just including and increasing the dining, or I mean, excuse me, the rail travel, passenger rail travel might bring all of that stuff.
We'll have them dine here in Winona when they stop.
You got it. I want to thank you, Paul, for your time and efforts into this project as well. I know you've given it a lot of effort. Thank you. You ready? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point five is the Prairie Island Campground Management Agreement Amendment Number Two. Make a motion direct Mayor and City Clerk to execute the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Chad, why don't you give us a little update here?
Mayor and Council, City staff met with Front Porch Management to discuss this amendment. Previous year, we included a one-time payment, or an annual payment to Front Porch Management to help with some of their maintenance costs. And this, we, we forgot to add an escalator for each year. And I just wanted to point out that probably is an understatement, the amount of maintenance that Front Porch Management puts into the campground. So I obviously believe this is appropriate. And of course, when you hear about high water this spring, that likely only means more work by Front Porch Management in the city as well to make sure the campground gets open. And so I, I think this is more than, more than justified.
Michelle?
I just, I want to thank you both for the amount of work you put in out there. Not only because I, I've heard through the users how much more they're enjoying the services you provide, but you can see that the activities that you're providing not only enrich the, the users of the park, but the community as a whole. And so I'm, I'm really pleased you guys agreed to take it on and you're continuing to, to tackle it, especially knowing that there could be high water coming again this spring, which affects your ability to... I meant there will be no high water this spring, so of course, it's going to be a great year out at Prairie Island. So thank you.
Al, do you have something? Yeah, I support the, the change. And I'm just curious about the amount estimated at three percent. What was the basis for that?
Mayor and Council, primarily that's just CPI and what the city typically does with part-time staff specifically. Of course, we do negotiations with full-time staff, you're well aware of that. But that's how we ended up with the three percent escalator each year.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point six is the Levy Park Master Plan Phase Two.
Make a motion direct staff to execute the proposal from ISG.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Discussion. Michelle?
If I read this correctly, that we had some leftover money because of some of the things we weren't allowed to do. And that's where the funding is coming from for the park planning for Phase Two. Or most of it's coming from that leftover money from Phase One. Am I understanding correctly?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So the bonding that we did for the Levy Park Gateway Project did have a favorable budget balance at this point. Primarily because we did the reduction of the, I guess for lack of a better word, is shade structure over the stage. And so there, there is a favorable budget balance. And this is where we'd like to use those funds to continue the master plan for Levy Park.
I know, Chad, you and I talked a little bit, because I've heard other people say it'd be nice to have some kind of a play area in the downtown, possibly Levy Park area. I think you're going to add that to the conversation, that's feasible or not.
So Mayor and Council, we will. I didn't have that in the original proposal, because we had asked for a, a good look at the Climbing Boulder Project. But I will emphasize with ISG that we would like to expand that to include more of a play area and what's appropriate for that space.
I, if we have ideas or suggestions of things that you could maybe look at for the rest of Phase Two, I'm, I'm a little concerned about what the play structure might look like, simply because of the river and the tracks. And that maybe we're careful about what type of equipment we put in there. But if we had other thoughts about what maybe would be of benefit, can we email those to you?
Certainly provide those to me. And in this project, or in this master plan phase, there will be presentation of that to Council and public input. And so with any master plan-
I know, but sometimes if you have them up front, it's easier because you can-
If you have them right away in your thought-
Get out of a, can say no, that's the word.
And members of the public can certainly contact our office if they have suggestions as well. And as Councilman Scholmeyer mentioned, public bathrooms and shade are on the top of the list.
Al? Yeah, I support this. The only question or suggestion I have is, you know, since Base Eight has made a significant investment with their warehouse and they want to do something on the, it would be the west side of their facility, which would be the east side of Walnut, that ISG should certainly work with them to perhaps offer ideas, suggestions, or try to complement, you know, whatever is happening in the park across the street from their facility. Chad, I have a question. I didn't hear you talk about improved river access. What does that mean?
So Mayor and Council, we are certainly, or we continue to explore docking facilities. It's really just another way of saying docking facility. Not only for the larger boats that come in, but also then, I guess what we call more the recreational user. If there still is something that we can do, now is the time to look in this phase. So anything, again, from large boats to recreational users is what we're trying to improve that access is really what that means.
Anybody else have any questions? Let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item five point seven is amend the ordinance for Sunday hours for on-sale liquor sales. This is a housekeeping matter to clean up the ordinance.
Make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Let's start with George.
I have nothing.
What? Mark it down. The world has ceased to run. It is spinning off of its access.
Let's keep the momentum going here.
Yeah, keep it going.
What has happened?
Pressure is hard. I, I just, I also want to acknowledge Froton River Film Festival and Outdoor Rock Alliance. Were putting on a weekend of wonderful events last weekend. And I want to encourage my colleagues, members of the audience, to write our legends letters. The bonding, we passed a resolution today to get that second train coming. But really, they want to hear from you. They've heard from us three years in, in a row. And really, they, they want to hear from you. So I really strongly encourage you to briefly write a note to Senator Miller, Representative Palowski, and Governor Walz, and tell them that, that this is important to you as well. Thank you.
Pam?
Nothing tonight.
Michelle?
Sorry, I have to talk about March of the Pomeranians. Calling all pets, except for spiders, because I don't like them. Sign up, come on down, dress up your pet. We have a, a young lady who's going to dress up her gerbil. We have people judging. We have, we're going to have some young people and older people judging each. There's six categories. If you win, you get a hundred dollars. It's not a bad way to spend a day. We'll be at Sobieski Lodge, and there'll be Polish food, and craft and artisan vendors, and a fur ball, and all kinds of fun things. So it's free to the public unless you want to compete. Then it's a dollar a leg, so ha ha if you bring a spider, eight dollars. And hope to see you all there.
Want to mention the date?
Oh, March twenty-eighth at noon. Registration starts at eleven, but I'm really encouraging people to sign up online, because as everyone knows, in Winona, we like to do things at the last minute. And I only, I'm one person, and I can only register so many pets in an hour. So sign up early.
Elaine?
Nothing from me.
Al? That's a hard act to follow, you know. I, I appreciate the comment on the sand and the dredging going forward, because people have been contacting probably me and everybody else on this, at this table about it. And it's a really critical issue for our community and for the aesthetics of our riverfront. So hopefully, it'll be a successful relationship with the Corps of Engineers, because we both mutually benefit being on the river and, and going forward from that. And then, you know, we did a, we passed that, we've done this a number of times. We've passed agreements that talk about use of city facilities. And we did that tonight on one of these. And I didn't get in quite enough to ask the question, but I think it's a general question, that we tell people who use our facilities that they're responsible for maintaining those facilities and correcting anything that, that happens to those facilities. And I'm just curious as to what the procedure is from the city's perspective on who does that, who inspects it? And then if there are kind of things that need to be done, how is that followed up? And are there reports made that, you know, are available for us to look at going, going forward for the next request that this particular individual or group makes? So I just, you know, ask for a follow-up question on that, as far as how it's done.
I think it depends on which department maintains the building to begin with. Maybe the lodge is, is one or Holson or-
Well, you know, I'm talking about, you know, like we had a request tonight to use, oh, what was it here? A part of Levy Park for the Island City Beer Run.
Right.
You know, I don't know why that came up. I just did when I was reading it.
So Mayor and Council, I'm not sure that I would call it a formal process.
Okay.
But with each permit and/or agreement for events, then following the event, park maintenance usually then reports back to the Park Rec Department. If there's damage done to the facility, we, we typically collect a damage deposit upfront. If the amount that we collected doesn't fix the issue, then we begin a process to bill the renter for the damage to the facility.
That's, that's a good thing to know, I think, in terms of going forward. And then I was, actually, I, I'm one of those people that subscribes to newspapers, the rare one, or two, or more. And, and I happened to look at my Sunday Star Tribune the other day. And lo and behold, on page B five, there was a really interesting article on folks who got started in Winona, who are inventing an alternative to the Zamboni machine. So I'll pass this along to our Park Rec Department. I know we, we have just decided to purchase a Zamboni, but this one isn't quite ready for prime time yet. But I thought it's something for reference. And that same issue of the paper, there was a really interesting article by Jerry Doust, who talked about this continuing issue with, not an issue, but the attention Winona has had from our commercial. And he really, I think, did a nice job in talking about another perspective. In other words, saying, you know, it's, it's, I think the title was "Search for Real Winona", which relates to not only those people who settled here as Europeans, but also those people who were here before, and the significance of our annual event that celebrates that heritage. So I thought it was well done. I'll just pass it along for, you know, city reference and things. If people wish to look that up, it's, it's really a good read. And I, I, I'm glad that he wrote that. And I'm glad the Star Tribune published it, so that's it. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are two items. Approval of the minutes from February third, and a claim against the city by Rich Snyder.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Return.